I'd like to call to order the Watcom County Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. If the clerk would like to call the roll.
Tim Baloo.
Here.
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown.
Yep.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Byrd.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Present.
Sat Paul Sado.
Here.
If you'd like to rise and join me in the flex.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. A couple of announcements. Please turn off your cell phones. If you are going to be handing out paperwork to the council members, please give one copy to the clerk for our files. Thank you. First up is from the Committee of the Whole, is consideration of an appeal of a penalty assessment, remission decision by Planning and Development Services, file number ENF 2017-00063 filed by Kyle Costin. Do I have a motion?
I move to, well, I would move to cut the fee in half. We had a discussion of this earlier. There were other motions that I think were equally interesting, but that's the easiest one for me to express.
I would move to waive the fee.
You can't have one motion on top of it. If I may, just indulge me. Is Kyle here? Okay. All right. All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second for Mr.?
I'll second that, so you can have a discussion.
All right. Discussion.
So I'll start the discussion. I think that the suggestion the Chair gave that we should give Kyle the option that cut the fee in half, or he can do to the basketball players, people who can't afford, do a $300, whatever the service is for those kids.
What?
A scholarship.
So I think if I may perhaps clarify that, the motion or the one, a proposal is that instead of charging him $300, that we, if he agrees to apply the $300 to his scholarship for underprivileged children who can't afford it, then we will allow him to do that instead. Is that correct? Is that your?
Yes, that's exactly what I mean, yeah.
Mr. Donovan.
I was just, nobody knows what we're talking about, so I put some background here.
Yeah, okay, let's let us know.
There's a gentleman who has set up a business, coaching kids in basketball. He had a facility that was a commercial activity in an inappropriate area. There were building code violations. He's been working, he's since moved and got a place that's all up to code. He was fined by the county on an appeal. I think it was Planning and Development Services cut the fine down to $300. He's appealing to have that fine eliminated, and we're trying to find some kind of middle ground here where we're not just saying you can violate the code and not suffer anything, but also acknowledging that he did try to and has done the right thing and got up to code, and that's what this is about.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, he didn't just do the right thing. He really worked hard to get into compliance really quickly. And so I think it's more than just he did the right thing. The other thing is, it was my understanding, I might be wrong, I don't think he charges the kids.
No, he doesn't.
He does?
It's a commercial business.
Oh. Hmm.
Okay, so Mr. Byrd.
I go back to, he's a young entrepreneur. He's trying to get a business off the ground. It's tough. We can't, to know everything that you have to do when you're starting out in business is almost impossible. I don't know any entrepreneur who ever has claimed that. I think that we cut him some slack. He worked hard to get it out there and support, to do the right thing once he found out. I think that we need to be encouraging entrepreneurship, that we need to be encouraging people to do the right thing. And the fact that he's moving forward and doing the right thing, I think, is a huge plus. And I think that, you know what, he learned his lesson, and we use a little common sense here. No one got hurt. There was no issue. There was no harm done to anybody. And we just waived the fee and say, hey, don't let it happen again. Hey, I would like that, I'm split on your proposal, or well, your proposal. Yeah, yeah, the same idea from two people. Because where I get a little stuck, and I get a little icky feeling in my stomach, is that I just don't know what kind of precedent that sets in the future, where it's like, well, if you do us a favor by giving some scholarships away, or doing something that we want, then we'll waive it. I'd rather just make it clean and say, hey, listen, you messed up, but you did the right thing. We understand that you didn't, you probably didn't understand it, and just don't do it again.
Mr. Byrd.
I think I, I see what Mr. Byrd has said, and I'm not disagreeing with you. You know, it's that this is not, we are doing it as a punishment of any sorts. We are actually very sympathetic. At least, I can speak for myself, we're very sympathetic, that he realized and he acted to correct the mistake. But at the same time, for young entrepreneurs, it is always difficult, and everybody probably have gone through their lives doing, but we do not want to say that, go ahead, start a business and do whatever you can, even breaking the law. You know, I think that, to me, it's a fair thing, we are leaving it to himself to, like, we tell people, do community service. This is actually just asking him, don't pay any fine, do a community service. And that community service is in his own field, that he teaches kids play basketball, and he charges small fee. That way, he can benefit some kids who cannot afford that fee. And that would be staying with him for a while, to see why he's doing this. So it's six or half a dozen, it's the same thing. I'm not really opposed to one or the other. But that was my intention.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna support this, but then I'm gonna make a motion on top of it to waive the fee. Because you can't put a motion on another motion.
So I would say, the way you phrase that, I actually kinda liked it. And so I'm curious, if we asked him to do it and said, hey, you know, we're gonna waive this, and what we would love to see is that you provided a sponsorship and this of value, it's totally on good faith, it's up to you to do, but this is what we're asking, allow him to do it? I mean, that would go a long way in showing what kind of character he has, I think, but I would feel much better about that. It's gonna be almost impossible to enforce, anyway, but...
So my concerns about just waiving the fee, and I was once a young entrepreneur, is that, my understanding is that PDS has already significantly reduced the size of the violation, and the violation was a health and safety violation, as I understand it, related to the fire code, which while we were fortunate that no one was injured, could have had some unpleasant circumstances if something had occurred. I think my concern is if we do waive it entirely, then what, why wouldn't we waive a health and safety violation for any young entrepreneur going forward?
I can't answer that.
So that's my concern. Ms. Brenner.
Well, because a lot of times, people don't do the right thing, even after their fine. And he did. So this was a case of him definitely learning from his mistake. And I think we'd be better off waiving the fee for anybody who turns right around and does, without even, you know, without even being kinda coaxed, or whatever you wanna call it, just immediately changes what he was doing. That would be great.
So point of process here, Mr. Sado made a proposal that was a little bit of a hybrid, so which one are you proposing, Mr. Sado? I think you mentioned cutting it in half, or asking him to use it as a scholarship.
Okay. I would agree with Mr. Byrd, that let him do voluntarily, let's waive the fee, but let him know voluntarily that if he can do $300 worth of benefits to the kids who come and learn basketball, let it be on him.
But the motion was to just cut it in half, and then, he's seconded the motion for discussion.
Yes. I like setting down here.
So you accept my friendly...
This is his.
You said, okay.
I don't know how friendly he's gonna be.
Sorry, my apologies. It's Mr. Donovan's motion.
I just was trying to speed this along. My motion was to cut it in half. Mr. Sado recommended amendment to that.
Yes. I'm saying, cut it to zero, but at the same time, ask him that voluntarily, he does $300 worth of service to the kids who come to learn basketball from him. And that's up to him, how he does that.
I'm fine with that. I do agree with Mr. Byrd, that, I don't know how, I mean, I agree with Mr. Brown. You know, there was a health and safety issue here. He did respond to it.
Real quick.
I don't know how we would administratively require that he, as much as I would like to, but yeah, yeah, if we made it clear that we're doing this with the hope that he can do an equal amount of free access to the kids, I don't know how we would require that. Anyway, that's, yes, I would take your amendment.
Okay. I was gonna just say that in last 10 minutes, with our mega salaries, we have already spent more money than $150 on this discussion already.
Yeah, I don't wanna do the math.
Okay. So for clarity, the motion is?
I accepted the amendment to waive the fee and make a suggestion that he voluntarily provide the $300, which was the amount of the original fee, as had it been reduced down to 300, in terms of scholarships or access to the basketball camps that he does, and that we are not able to compel him to do that. But that would be the sort of hope of the county.
Believe, say believe instead of hope. We believe he's gonna do it.
The goal of the county would be, you know...
Yeah, okay.
I second that.
Madam Clerk, are you clear on the motion? Okay. Ms. Brenner, did you have a comment?
No, that's, I wanted him to change the word to hope to believe.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up is, we have several sets of minutes, and we're gonna break these into sections. I move, first I move forward, minutes for items one through six. Do I have a motion to move those forward?
I move approval.
Ms. Brenner moves approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'd like to pull out number six.
Okay, let's make it items one through five. Do I have a motion to put one through five?
Uh, we already just did one through six, didn't we?
He's asked.
Friendly.
Oh, you gotta...
For one through five.
Okay. One through five.
I second.
A second, a motion of second for minutes one through five. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next item up is minutes number six. Do I have a motion to introduce minutes number six?
Move to approve minutes number six.
Mr. Donovan moves approval. Mr. Sado seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes six, zero, with one abstention. Next item up is minutes seven and eight. Does someone move approval?
Wait a minute, seven?
Seven and eight.
Seven through eight, what?
Seven and eight.
Why aren't we just doing the rest of these?
Because we're gonna be pulling some of them.
The motion is, I'm asking for someone...
I move to approve seven and eight.
Mr. Donovan moves seven and eight. Mr. Sado?
I second that.
Mr. Byrd seconds seven and eight.
Make the minutes long, just long.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Abstain, and I abstain. So that's five, zero, with two abstentions. Next item up is minutes nine through 13. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Mr. Buchanan moves approval. Any second, a second?
Second.
I move to remove number 10.
All right, let's do number nine, then. Does someone move approval for number nine?
I'll move.
Mr. Buchanan moved approval for nine. The second was Mr. Byrd. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
That passes six to zero with Mrs. Sado abstaining. Next item up is number 10. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Mr. Byrd moves approval. Any second?
I get it.
Mr. Buchanan seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same.
I abstain.
They're abstaining from meetings they didn't attend.
So six, zero, and Mr. Donovan abstains. Next item up is minutes 11 through 13. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve 11 through 13.
Second.
Mr. Donovan, Mr. Byrd seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero with one abstention.
I abstain, yeah.
With Mrs. Sado abstaining, right. All right. Next up is an ordinance regarding temporary installation of a stop sign on Roberts Road, at Central Road during construction of Roberts Road, Anderson Creek Bridge, 249 Replacement Project 113, AB 2018-113. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Mr. Donovan moves approval. Any discussion?
You gotta have a public hearing first.
Sorry. Slap my wrist, okay. Allow me to open the public hearing for anybody who wishes to talk about this stop sign.
A stop sign.
I can see a long line. Okay, that's it. No one turns up. Closing the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Mr. Donovan moves approval.
Second.
Mr. Byrd seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven...
This is an ordinance.
Ordinance.
Sorry, roll call.
Stop sign is, okay.
Tim Baloo. Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Byrd.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Captain.
Sat Paul Sado.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. The next item up...
Very fortunate, we've got the clerk here to keep us on, doing things right.
Okay. Next item up is the open public session, and in this case, audience members who've signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of our meeting will be called first and are asked to form a line behind the signs on either side of the chambers. If you're unable to sign up before the meeting, you will be given an opportunity to address the council, once we've gotten through all the folks listed on the hearing sheets. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and shall be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of the time limits, and we'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your comments. When a larger group of individuals supports the same position on Linda's issue, unlikely tonight, we encourage you to select one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group. Do we have a list, or not?
For open session?
Open session.
Yeah. No list.
No, okay, fine. Please come forward. And anybody else who wishes to speak, please line up behind.
Hi, my name is Molly Crocker, and I'm a resident of incorporated Watcom County, near Ferndale. I have, I have been watching the planning unit process since January, got involved with Wells Caucus actually last November, and have slogged through thousands of pages on the web and in paper about how we got here. I made a 20-minute video, or it ended up being about a 30-minute video. I sent you a link to that after the last council meeting, and also a list of the RCWs that applied to what the planning meeting, planning unit should look like, and what our current process looks like. And it looked like this. You all got an email copy of that. Did you find it? Sat Paul Sado acknowledged receipt of it, no one else did. I talked to Barbara last night. But anyway, the planning unit is the one, the body that's empowered by the RCWs to do the planning for our watershed management plan. We've got a lot of other extraneous committees that make this look like a multi, well, our current planning looks kind of like a polygon with all the vertices connected to all the other vertices, and everything's crossing. It's chaos. It's just chaos. And that has to smooth out, if this process is going to move forward. And I would really like to see us adhere to this plan. I think it opens us up, I'm not gonna hire any, but it opens us up for legal action if we don't adhere to the plan, because this is what's in the RCWs. And I don't wanna go do it again. I don't wanna do it again. So have a look at this, please, and maybe pass this on to your administrative staff and says, it needs to look like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
Jim Peterson, Southern Valley. I'm here to talk to you about a problem Homes Now is having now. We have been given three fifth-wheel campers over the last five months. Then yesterday, we were given another one. These are older models, but in great condition. Each one could house three to five people tonight. The problem is, we have no place to park them. Because of their age and looks, we can't put them in campgrounds. So here we sit, with the ability to house 15 to 20 people tomorrow, and have no place to put them. We have looked at the jail site and are very interested in that site, as we could see that it is big enough, we could do our tiny home project, and also space to put the five-fifth-wheel campers. We are trying to raise money to buy land also, but even if we buy land tomorrow, we still couldn't use it until the zoning and that is set up for us. We are frustrated with the process, but not discouraged. We've tried reaching out to Yori Burnett with Ferndale Planning, through phone calls, emails, and personal, with no luck at that. Any help you could give us with that would be appreciated. On another note, I would like to invite one or all of you to come stand with Homes Now on April 26 at 7:00 PM at the Bill and Hand Planning Commission meeting at City Hall, which they will be talking about tiny homes, safe camping, and that. You all voted seven to zero to work with us. I know it's a big ask, but it would mean a lot to have you standing beside us at this meeting. Maybe even talk on our behalf. Thanks for your time. And I have one of you for everybody.
Thank you, Jim.
My name's Paul Isaacson, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Watcom Well Caucus and Watcom Wells. You'll see our Articles of Incorporation there. I represent hundreds of people in the county. We have just finished our Articles of Incorporation, our general liability insurance to utilize or function within any kind of government building, as well as our bylaws and other parts of necessary business to form a collaborative group to represent Wells. Several of you council members have said to me over time, we would like to see things organized. And I think in the beginning of this, I think Councilmember Brown just said, we would like one person to speak on behalf of any groups or interests. So that's what I'm here to do. I do want you to all recognize that, to many people, this water issue that we're facing, and the multiple different committees and groups and thoughts and ideas, is well over the heads of most people to even understand the process. When an average person comes to me, or one of our board members and says, hey, what's going on with water? We pretty well have to tell them it's gonna take a couple hours and sit down with a cup of coffee just to get the gist of it. And most people just don't have that. They just don't have that in their life. So I want you to understand that the planning unit is the sole access, in our opinion, for the collaborative work session, to be able to have a dialogue. This type of process doesn't work for most. I come up here and speak, I don't know if you're really listening to me, I don't know if you have a response, and nor does anyone else. But in that process, we actually have a dialogue back and forth. We have suggestive ideas, we can throw things around, and we also have what we call the GFC, Government and Funding Work Sessions prior to that, to suggest to the planning unit different actions and thoughts and ideas. So it's really an important process, and I think the state recognized that when the new law was, was written. And I hope you all can respect that. I also want you to understand that, as a caucus member, that's really the access for people to be represented. This doesn't represent their concerns, because they can't ever articulate to you in two or three or five minutes what their true concerns are, and if they're even applicable, because they can't read through thousands of documents, and many people...
30 seconds, please.
Do not even have the ability to even disseminate the information, to be able to even articulate it to you. So that's how complex this is. And I hope you respect this as you go through. And as we move forward, I have seen the new resolution that Brenner and Byrd has put together, and we support that as a caucus, very much so. And we don't even think there's any question that that should be supported by all of you. And as my grandfather always said, and I want to close with this, you don't need to tell people that you love them, you need to show them. So all these people that are working on the planning, on the planning unit, every one of them, most of them, other than I believe three, are not even paid. So please, tell them how important they are, and how much you value the hundreds of hours they've put into it. Thank you.
Mr. Brenner.
I just wanted to tell you, on that Lake Watcom thing, the boundary, if you're not in the Lake Watcom watershed, you do, you can change that boundary. Get ahold of Gary Stoica at Public Works.
I got it.
He said he would...
Go with him, sit with him on panels all the time, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
He's the one to talk to. He came up and said, I'm the one.
Gotcha. Any questions, anyone, or, okay?
Max Perry, Watcom County. And I, sitting here through your, your last committee meeting of the whole this afternoon or this evening, just before 5:00, you finished, and the safety and, of cherry point, the safety and welfare issue came up all the time. And I could debate you a long time for that, that it's really safety and welfare you're thinking about. But we have a jail, a real need for a jail. We've had it for a long time. And you folks have set on that, and that's safety and welfare. That's safety and welfare of the people that are having to work there, safety and welfare for the, for the people that are kept there, incarcerated there, some for their own protection, some for addictions of one sort or another, and actions of one sort or another, some for illegal things on. But there's a real need. And you guys have, if you'd have passed that first, when you castigated your executive for passing out a brochure, if you'd have passed that at that time, if some of you, I think four of you got on behind it at that time, and some of you here did not get behind it, you would have that jail built, and been in it in 2019. That's when it, when it would have started. It would have been funded. Now you're gonna rebuild a jail up above here that was automated, and everybody said it's not, not worthwhile to rebuild, but you're going to rebuild that, because they have to, because of safety issues, and it's gonna cost you millions, and you're gonna come out of your own budget, your own budget here. There's no other funding for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. I think that was a good point.
Ms. Perry, and if there's anybody else who wishes to speak, please line up, or we'll close the open public session.
Carol Perry, Watcom County. Want to amen what Max said, and also say amen to what Mr. Isaacson said about the planning unit. It was January, and I've told you this before, of 2015, I think it was, when up on the fifth floor of this building, a group of citizens came and asked for the planning unit to be reconstituted, was kind of the word. I think Chris Bruski was in charge at that time, and so forth. And I want to tell you that that joint board meeting, everybody rejected what the citizens said at that meeting, except Kelly Linville. She rose at the end of the meeting and said, hey, I was there when the Watershed Management Act was put together. I was on the committee. It was designed for transparency. It was designed for citizens to be involved. And I know some of you have had resistance to that, thinking that it, and even some in other parts of county government have resisted that very much. I've been to every meeting, I think, almost, since 20, no, it was 2013, when I went to that meeting. But I want to bring something to your mind. But I want to bring something to your mind. Before 6091 was passed, the planning unit was coming to you at the surface water meetings, and they brought, they didn't come asking for money. They made that clear. They wanted you to see that there had been work done and that it was legal, that there was a watershed management plan that had been adopted, that it was, it came from the state, the county had accepted it, and it was, I have never seen this before. The planning unit came, and you asked for the planning unit to come back. They came again, and you asked the planning unit to come back because they were giving you valuable information, and that's what Mr. Isaacson was talking about. As I've watched county government, I have never seen
Thirty seconds, please.
More progress than what I've seen at the planning unit because, as you were talking about the Cherry Point thing today too, there's dialogue. These people have been involved, they're volunteering, and they're not, it's not their salary. And Barbara made the amendment, let's support the planning unit. Carl Weimer, he seconded it, and you voted unanimously, which was a miracle.
Time.
It's a good, support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Again, if there's anybody else who wishes to speak, please line up.
Dave Bach, Linden area, unincorporated King County. I want to underscore what Max Perry said about the jail. I recently completed the Sheriff's Academy, Citizens Academy, and did a tour of the jail. And we need something that's not going to be the liability hazard that is. There are only two stairwells at the opposite ends for fire use only. All the other access through the floors are just via two elevators. So if you have any kind of emergency situation, whether it be anything from riot to earthquake, you have a disaster on your hands, it's going to be a huge liability to this county, and it's probably going to wind up costing a lot more than an adequate replacement and more modern version of that jail. So I would say that's one of the priorities that should be addressed in the months to come as soon as possible. And I think as more people find out about the condition of that situation, you'll probably hear more about it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close the public session, and next up from finance.
All right, we had a meeting earlier, the committee meeting, and this was the first item is the request approval for the county executive to award a bid number 18-07 and enter into a contract for 2018 hot mix asphalt pre-level at various locations to low bidder Lakeside Industries, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $1,302,998 AB 2018-119. It received a vote of three to three zero, and I so move.
With the consent agenda items, we're actually able just to introduce all of them if you wish.
Pardon me?
We can just introduce all items, one through six.
Do I need to read all of them?
No, the ones after that, you do.
So I just moved that the consent agenda items from one to six for approval.
Okay. Have a second, Ms. Brenner. Are you seconding or are you just discussing?
Discussing.
I'll second.
Okay. Mrs. Donovan, Ms. Brenner.
I would like to remove item number two.
Okay. Any others want to move?
Four.
Four, you have to speak.
Sorry. Fair enough. Number four, please.
So number two and number four have been moved, so we're now voting on numbers one, three, five, and six. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that passes unanimously. The next item up, now Mr. Sudu, if you'd read item two into the record.
Item two is request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watcom County and FCS Group to conduct Phase Two of establishing a funding mechanism for the Lake Watcom Stormwater Utility in the amount of $77,420 for a total contract amount of $111,952 AB 2018-105A, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I just want to make sure people understand because it wasn't clear, and I had to clarify it to a number of people. This is to do recommendations only. There is no way that this group will make a final decision, nor will the advisory committee. Their job is to advise the council. We're the ones who will make the final decision on how it's funded and who pays what. I just want to make sure people understand that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I think that was a, I think that was a nay.
Nay.
Right, I got it. It passes six to one with Mr. Bird opposed. Okay, next item up, Mr. Sudu.
Okay, item number four, the request approval for the county executive to have Public Works purchase a replacement street sweeper using the Washington State Contract 02613 from vendor-owned equipment company in amount of $292,470.94 AB 2018-1218. It received two to one vote, and ayes, move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
The reason I am not in favor of this right now is because in finance, you have something called the time value of money, which is essentially funds that you have today, cash that you have today is worth more than cash that you will have in the future, largely due to inflation and the fact that things will continue to go up. So when you're looking at this, the reason we're replacing this is because it's at the end of its lifespan, not because it's broken down, not because it's not working, it's just on a paper somewhere. It should last so many years, it's hit that point and it's time to replace it. In my mind, I'd rather see us continue to keep that money. If we look at inflation and that time value, it's about $9,000 a year, and unless we're replacing more than $9,000 in additional parts over and above what we would typically be replacing, then it's not a good investment, in my mind. And so until the point in time where this vehicle that only has 85,000 miles becomes over or begins to exceed that additional $9,000, I don't think it needs to be replaced, unless there's another reason for it.
Well, if I recall the discussion today, the, I'm trying to remember the person who was speaking from Public Works, but the comment was that it was, they were anticipating major repairs to, that exceed, well, exceed 9,000 a year. Was that correct statement, Mr. Hutchings?
Yeah, John Hutchings, Public Works Director. And I don't intend to get in a, you know, in a conversation, get too deep in the weeds about our replacement program, but first, let me say we're talking about a sweeper. So most of the miles that a sweeper drives is to and from the place where it's actually doing its work, and its work involves driving down the road at about five miles an hour. The point is that the mileage has very little to do with its replacement, its longevity in the fleet. What does matter is the number of hours that are on it and that it has been operating the sweeper mechanism and all of that business. This particular unit has 3,000 hours on it, and if you do the math, that's quite a few hours. And in all of our replacement programs, we have a, we have a, an analysis that looks at the average lifetime, operational life of like vehicles around Western Washington. Those numbers are put out by DOT and others, and we use those as guidelines, and then we have our own, our own history with these machines. So the whole point is to replace it while there's still value. And of course, there are, and the reason we want to replace it when there's still value is because there's a secondary market for these vehicles. So there is a sweet spot in the amount of time that you keep one in your fleet. If you keep it too long, you end up investing more and more money in the maintenance of it at a loss to the lifetime cost of operating the piece of equipment. And in fact, this piece of equipment, I'm going to have to change screens here, so bear with me, please, has had has had a total of $176,000 in, since 2005, excluding fuel, in, in maintenance costs. So we're replacing now a vehicle that has gone from about, about $1,000 a year early in its life to now we're putting about $10,000 in, in annual maintenance, and I guess that must be maintenance and operation costs. In any case, the point is that this analysis gets done for every piece of heavy equipment that we own and every class of fleet vehicles that we operate. In other words, we have a, we have a well-thought-out replacement schedule that is tied to data that, that drives, data that drives replacement schedules and fleet management all over the country. So this isn't something that we're just making up. And I would be happy to talk to you more about that at your, at your leisure.
Well, I can admit when I'm wrong, and John, I think you just schooled me, so thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes seven to zero. Next item up is
Other, other items from Finance and Administration Services Committee are request authorization for the county executive to sign an attorney engagement and contingency fee agreement between Watcom County and Keller Rohrbeck LLP AB 2018-116, and it received three zero approval, and I so move.
And a motion, and Ms. Brenner.
This is discussion?
Yep.
Karen, are you still here? I can't see. Okay. We got an email that brought up my concern. I'm concerned, there are people who legitimately will need these particular drugs, and the fellow came up, what I thought was an excellent idea, and I don't know why those attorneys didn't do that instead, that we should be going after the doctors who overprescribe and not the pharmaceutical companies.
Well, that did come up in the executive session, and some doctors actually are being
Good, but they, more of them should be. But my concern is that there is, especially people at end-of-life issues and, you know, people with very horrible types of health issues like cancer and other things that are very, you know, certain ones are extremely painful. I just, I'm concerned, and I brought, I've brought this up before, I'm just concerned that, I didn't see anything in there that said not to be applied for legitimate use. I didn't see anything that quite looked like that. I just saw that it was about opioids, and people love to jump on that bandwagon. While I agree that I want to do what we can to decrease the misuse and over-prescribing of opioids, I don't want companies to stop providing them when they're necessary, and that's my big fear.
Can I respond to that?
Hold on.
I don't think that was a legal question, but the product's not going to go away. And I think in the conversation we had, meeting with these attorneys, and I'll give some background here, they were saying there are genetic, generic versions of these, even if these companies disappear, that product is still going to be there, and the way that the state has moved, you know, is it's lowering the raw number of pills that can be prescribed at any one time. So I think that's a legitimate concern, but that this lawsuit, and for the folks who are following along here, we are voting on whether to sign on with a law firm who represents other jurisdictions in Washington who are suing Purdue Pharmaceutical and some of the other companies that were involved in marketing OxyContin and Percocet, is it Percocet or Perkadin? I can't remember. And, you know, they have a pretty strong record showing that these companies engaged in deceptive practices towards doctors about whether these things would be addictive and that they, you know, aggressively encouraged physicians to overprescribe. So as well as the physicians are responsible, the other big problems, like well-intended physicians were given false, bad information that caused them to overprescribe, which is one reason why we'd go after the company. And in the, I believe that the case they filed on behalf of Tacoma, they were actually then, you know, building a record to see if there were specific physicians having pill mills in those towns, they'd go after that. That would be part of the case. But it's, this is, they're, they're working for free, essentially, and if there's a judgment against the companies, then they get paid that way. The thing we're really seeking here is some support for, you know, the programs that we have here locally to address opioid abuse and a bunch of the, it's not a class action suit, it's a collection of different jurisdictions that are suing, and these are going to be compiled back in, I guess, one of the district courts in Ohio, was, it was a federal district court in Ohio that's going to be hearing a bunch of these things. So I, I mean, I think it's win-win for the county, but it, I think we, this is a good point, we need to make people, it's, OxyContin in its generic form or whatever is not going to be going away as a result of this suit. This is to try to hold accountable these companies for their actions and for what they did to physicians.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, that was a very good explanation. My question is, if the companies don't make it, because they, some of them make generic too, who does, who makes the generic?
I don't have the answer to that.
Companies that are making a lot less money off of it.
Right.
That's a good question, but I, I was convinced by our conversation in executive session, and I think I can say this freely, right, that that product will be there, and that even that, these, Purdue's quit marketing this stuff, right? I think, you know, they realize, I mean, they're still producing it, but they've quit that sort of, you know, direct marketing to physicians, knowing that they're kind of in trouble. But the product's still out there, I don't know the names of the companies.
So if I may read something from Wikipedia, for those of you who want to look it up, it's under Oxycodon. Oxycodon was first made available in the United States in 1939, so it's not a, it's not a patented, it's a generic drug. In the 1970s, the FDA classified Oxycodon as a Schedule II drug indicating a high potential for abuse and addiction. In 1996, Purdue Pharma introduced OxyContin, a controlled-release formulation of Oxycodon. And in 2007, Purdue paid 600 million in fines after being prosecuted for making false claims about the risk of drug abuse associated with Oxycodon. So I don't think, I don't think there's any doubt as to who's behind the rise in addiction in the U.S. By the way, I would also point out, this is, this is a relatively, this, the rise in OxyContin, Oxycodon, opioid addiction is predominantly a U.S. phenomenon. It doesn't, it doesn't show up in other developed nations, and the difference is the marketing on the part of the drug companies. So, anyway. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes seven to zero. Next item up, item up.
The last item is resolution in the matter of sale of surplus property and setting a date for public hearing thereon pursuant to Watcom County Code 1.10, this is AB 2018-118. And it received three zero vote, and I move to approve.
Move approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes seven to zero. The next item up was from the Special Committee of the whole, which was a resolution recognizing the roles and duties of Watcom County, the YOAN Planning Unit, the YOAN Initiating Governments Regarding Water Resources Planning under RCW 90.82 and ESSB 6091. This was held in committee until the next session. Next item up is introduction items, and do I have a motion to introduce?
Move to introduce.
Second.
And item two was struck from the list, so.
Stop, Mr. Brenner.
And item seven is held in committee. So we are moving to introduce items one, three, four, five, and six. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do you can approve?
Second.
Mr. Donovan, second, is any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Is there any, our committee reports natural resources.
Natural resources had a briefing on designated mineral resource lands. This will be an ongoing process, trying to figure out where the resource is, where lands will be designated, where the resource can be taken out, and how we protect other uses surrounding those areas. And staff brought to us a number of criteria that we need to be looking at. We are directing them to talk to the Ag Advisory Board, the Mineral Resource, what do you call that committee, the Surface Mining Advisory Committee, there's one more, Forestry Committee, get that feedback.
Ag forestry and
Ag forestry and surface mining, and bring that back to staff, and we will be, I think, that'll be going to the planning And bring that back to staff, and we will be, I think, that'll be going to the Planning Commission, it'll be coming back to us, but we will, you will be hearing more about designating where gravel mining and marine resource extraction can be designated in the county. That's pretty much all we had.
Thank you. Finance, anything else from Finance?
Yes, we had three major items. One was that we had a presentation from Washington County's Risk Pool, talked about the executive director, Derek Bryan, was here, and he gave us some data on how all the counties insure theirsself. There are 26 counties who have joined into a pool for self-insuring and then buying some outside insurance for bigger losses. And he gave a presentation and a data about how Watcom County fared against the other counties. We were looking good in the way that our experience or what, what did he call, experience factor, was .76, which, which is better than a lot of other counties as far as we are concerned, because that reduces our annual premium into the risk pool. And then we had a report from Mr. Perry Rice about the cybersecurity, and he gave us a outline of all the IT programs for 2018 and 2019, what they have completed, what they're going to complete, and what is in process. And we did talk about cybersecurity as being a big issue, what has happened in that Atlanta or a couple of other places, that they were held hostage by these ransomware. And so we are taking actions in the sense that, how we can secure our, our digital information. The third item was that the Facilities Department gave a presentation that they would like to move to Williamson Way and vacate that building right outside the jail on the other side. And, and they showed that their move will be at least 10 years or more, and it will take 400-some thousand dollars to bring it to, to the position that they can move in and update all the cabling and electrical, which is from 70s. And, and everybody agreed that it is a good move. That's it.
Okay. Committee of the Hall, we discussed the penalty reduction.
Well, we also, before Committee of the Hall, didn't we have Public Works?
No, that was afterwards. So the Committee of the Hall, we had, we discussed the penalty assessment remission decision, which we voted on earlier this evening, and then that was followed by Public Works. Ms. Brenner.
Okay. Public Works, we had a presentation on the proposed solid waste handling up at Point Roberts, and we, I think it's sort of been held because we didn't vote on it or anything, but I need more information. I'm not convinced there's not a more efficient way to do it up there. I appreciate what, what Jeff Hedgus from the Health Department said about Point Roberts is a small, little, isolated place, and we can't really treat it the way we treat the rest of the county. But on the other hand, I don't believe there's been enough of an effort made to, to follow our own existing code, which would mean people sign up for solid waste and recycling or provide a reason for an exemption, or they should have to pay, period. And nobody's followed up on that. So I'm not there with it, and I don't know, there were a number of other council members at the meeting, I don't know how they feel, but stay tuned.
And then Planning Development, Mr. Bird.
We had a presentation from Planning and Development Services. They gave us an overview of the department. They gave us an update on the software that they're putting in place to help with streamlining permitting. I think that'll be nice once it's done. And towards the end of next year, we're going to get a lot of data about how long it's taking to move through the process and what each stage of that process looks like as far as timelines go. So, good presentation.
Okay. And then Special Committee of the Hall, we had a discussion of specific sections of the proposed ordinance adopting amendments to Watcom County Code Title II Administration Personnel, Title IX Public Peace and Morals and Welfare, Title XV Building and Construction, Title XVI Environment, Title XX Zoning, Title XXI Land Division Regulations, Title XXIII Shareline Management Program, Title XXIV Health and Creating a New Land Title, New Title XXII Land Use and Development. This is designed predominantly to do a code scram and consolidation of the code. And then after that, we had a discussion about proposed ordinance repealing ordinance number 2018-01, 2018-005, and adopting amendments to the Watcom County Comprehensive Plan. And this is, this discussion was held in committee until the next meeting. Other items?
Other, other business items?
Other business items. Does anybody else have any other? Go ahead.
Me?
Yep.
Yeah, I got an email from a person who wants to put a conservancy designation on their property, but doesn't want to deal with the contract that we have, wants to deal with somebody else. And I, oh, you're here, okay, Mike might be able to, and you don't have to answer it tonight, but I would like to find out if he's going to put it in conservancy for the benefit of Watcom County, why he can only deal with one, with one organization, that he can't deal with a different one. I, I think the conservancy part of it is more important than who, and as long as it's somebody who's, you know, will contract with us, I don't think we should have a sole contract with only one organization that they can deal with. So I'm interested in having this maybe come through committee or something and find out why we can't allow somebody to deal with a different provider, as long as the county gets the benefit. So that's my request.
Any other items from any other, Mr. Buchanan?
Yeah, I kind of wanted to go back to committee reports. Just wanted to give you an update. We had our first listening tour for the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee a week ago tonight. Councilmember Sedu, Bird, and I went out to the Demming Library, along with Sheriff Elfo, give him a shout out and thank him for, for being there with us. We had a lively discussion. I think everybody gained a lot from it. I'm looking forward to the next one, which is a week from tonight in Linden at the library on Fourth Street at 7:00 PM. So hope to see folks out there and give us your views on criminal justice in Watcom County.
Thank you. Mr. Blue, anything?
Oh, another, other update other than, I want to acknowledge that the comments that were made from the folks about the planning unit, my short stay here at the county council, I attended all but one this year, and I can definitely attest that there is a commitment at the planning unit to address 6091 and to see the process through. And I, I really hope that the, the county council can help support that, but also that the planning unit work together to address more than just this one issue and water issue. I think that that's the definite repeating theme that I hear through the committee, that there's a, a commitment to work on the larger water issues for the community, which I think is a good thing.
Donovan.
I'm going to report.
Mr. Bird?
I had the opportunity to meet with the Check-in at Homeowners Association last week, and they have some concerns, one of which is speeding down there, both on motorcycles and cars. And it'd be nice, I know Sheriff Elfo's not here tonight, but to see if we can get some extra patrols down there to help him out with that issue, especially as we head into spring. But it was good, informative meeting that was well-attended, so thank you.
Mr. Sedu.
I just want to echo what Mr. Buchanan said, that it was a very good meeting at Demming, talking about the jail and the other issues related to the incarceration as well as the alternate programs. I think it's, it, I expect that we will get a lot more feedback with five or six of these meetings we have scheduled over the next couple of months. And the second thing is, I also echo that planning unit, whatever they are doing is a great job, we need to support it. We have only a few months, and if we are very careful and shepherd this process and come to some good conclusions, that will be very good for our county. One more thing I want to add to that is that while we are spending a lot of time on exempt wells and things, but that is only 2% of our problem, I think I would expect people to, to bring the other issues to the forefront, because more or less 6091 has spoken, what do we do with that? And rather than regurgitating that again and again, we need to approach the other issues just as a framework. That's all we can do in, in remaining months. But we must address that framework so that in the following years, we can implement some of the solutions. So my request is to, to everyone who's listening and everyone who's here, please don't politicize it. Let's work together. We have a good vibes and good group working. Let's make it a success.
I suspect you also have something special happening soon too, don't you?
Yes. I want to talk about that this process started about 10 years ago, that we wanted to do a memorial for the 1907 Bellingham Riots, that's how they call it. And we have been working with the executive Jack Louse and Mayor Kelly Linwell to build a memorial called Arch of Healing and Reconciliation. And the whole project has been $100,000. We are building an arch right in front of the city hall in the park behind the library, which is a granite, red granite arch, 12 feet high and 12 feet wide. And it is, it is a memorial with a positive note that how more than 100 years ago, people come here for a better life and, and better opportunity, and how they went through their struggles. And it is a message for the people in future who are coming to this opportunity land, that how this, this country has been able to create a unique example in the whole world to, to assimilate all the immigrants into this. And we have a memorial for the 1907, for the people coming from India, they were mostly six, there were about 350 people here, and maybe 85% were six, and there were some Muslims and some Hindus. At the same time, it memorializes the events in 1885 for the Chinese community, and in 1942, the incarceration of Japanese community, who were actually United States citizens. But, you know, we all know the story. And there will be four plaques on, on that arch, memorializing each of these events, as well as a proclamation of Day of Healing and Reconciliation as, as a bronze plaque. So it is on April 21st at 10:30 AM on a Saturday, and President Randhawa from Western Washington University will be the keynote speaker. And everybody is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember updates? Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Blue, Ms. Brenner, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Bird? You have to speak up, you know, be a bit more forceful.
Oh, we were just talking about that. I thought, we just did that, so we're going through it again.
No, no, no. We did, we did, no, I'm sorry, we did other items.
Well, I went to India, I needed to work on my tan, and I'm all set for next four years. I think it was a great trip, and it was pretty hot there, you know, it was like more than 90 degrees in daytime and 65 degrees at midnight. And, but I have some family there, and I really enjoyed it. It was like four years before I went there, so I totally enjoyed it. I know I missed a couple of meetings, but it was really worth for me to go there. Thank you.
Great tan, by the way.
Yes.
A great tan.
All right. With that, seeing nothing else, we are adjourned.